Okay, should be good to go. Six o'clock.
Okay, do we have, do we need, what we need so that Bill Driver doesn't have to call in? There's a question on that, right?
Yeah, you have to have us three people to have a call, so I think you have a call.
Does he know this, did we?
I, I texted him and told him to plead out a call.
Okay. Uh, so am I. Substitute teaching for Bill. All right, I call this meeting. City of Mexico Beach Planning and zoning Board, Friday, November second, to order. Do you wanna do a roll call?
Yep. Mr. Carrigan?
Here.
Ms. Lindsay?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Mr. Driver? Mr. Masters?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
All right. The first piece of business is item number two on the agenda. Minor replat fifty-six Avalia, Avalia Drive. Do we have any comment from the public? I'll see if the public here, and I guess you've received anything?
No, Avalia Drive.
No, Mr. George. Okay, I guess that closes the public hearing portion, um, board discussion.
Well, the Senate before provided plots to make a bigger plot, so I, I'm seeing objection.
Hard work. Any other?
No, I, I think he's right, no.
Yep, it is, um, it's consistent with the city's objective of lower density. And I see that for that reason, staff approves it, it meets impervious requirements. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
President of the Congress, do you request to consolidate lot eighteen and nineteen in the one of Avalia fifty-six Drive?
I'll sign up.
We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Next, we have a setback variance at two oh eight Fourth Street. Is there anyone from the public, any public comment on this? None? So, I did receive two emails, but I don't think there are any emails related to this.
Nope.
All right, um. Okay, uh. Before we get into a board discussion, I have questions, Bill, in the front.
Okay.
It looks like. Um, the requests to be various because the addition, the distance between the addition and the existing shed would be eight feet, or eight point seven feet, which is less than the required ten. But staff's recommendation is that the shed be relocated. Is that correct?
Well, the, uh, that was one of the things, that the shed is actually sitting in setbacks now. It's already there, so, you know, it, it's an existing structure, but if we were to allow them to, to, uh, reduce that distance to, you know, less than ten feet between the shed and the proposed addition, I was just thinking that it might be nice to get the shed put back in the right spot, uh, or, or where it should be per the regulations, but that was just an idea.
So.
How long has the shed been there?
Uh, I don't know.
Yeah.
It wasn't just built, though, it's been, it's been some time.
I turned back today, and it's way out of spec on everything, I mean, there's one, some of the, uh, side setback is, what, six feet? And the back setback is five, so I think if they do anything at all, then if they have to bring everything down to spec, there's a total of place, there must, there should be nothing left.
You're talking about that shed, right, Gina? How, how big is that? Can't really tell by the value.
The shed?
Yes.
The shed's like four hundred square feet.
Hmm, that's pretty good size shed.
Twenty by twenty.
So it's not gonna be moved very easily?
No.
It's on a concrete slab, all say it. Okay.
Yeah, okay, but they are building onto the house, correct?
Correct.
And so what about meeting the impervious requirements and all those things? Does it meet impervious?
Yes, ma'am, they'll meet impervious to, uh, with the addition.
Even with a four hundred twenty foot shed, this new addition, it'll still be within spec?
Yes.
Okay. You have little look on it, look like, you know, you've done a bath on it. It must.
Now, what, what would the firewall look like, that two hour firewall? If you, you have to be to go here.
Well, so the, there, there's two, two issues here, one of them is, I mean, they're both the ten foot issue. Uh, one of the regulations is in the building code, it says that if structures are within ten feet of each other, then they have to have a firewall. So, but the Mexico Beach LDR regulation just says structures shall be ten feet apart from each other without any kind of fire. I don't know if the regulation came from the fire code, and that's why it's there, or is it something else? So, so you can get around the building code requirement by putting a firewall. You can't get around the LDR by putting a firewall, that I know of. Um, so that's, that's kinda where the, where the firewall issue came in.
Do the ownerships have to be different for the firewalls and?
It's not, it doesn't say that in the, uh, LDR.
But again, I mean, if you build a, a U-shaped building, it's less than ten feet away from this, and you, you don't have to have a firewall, and it's all one common ownership.
Uh, yeah.
This house and shed are all one common ownership, they're not separate businesses, they're not separate entities, they are responsible for their own.
Right, abs- and I agree with that, uh, you know, also, well.
I, I feel, I don't know why you would have to have a, a, a fire separation between your own buildings as well, as a builder's building works.
Well, you have to have a separation in anything that can store, um, you know, vehicles or anything like that, so like between your garage and your house, you have a firewall. Between your, uh, and, you know, underneath your house, if you park underneath your house, you have to have a fire. Um, so.
And is this shed built to that standard or, or not?
Uh, I doubt it.
No.
No, shed, oh, it looks like a two by one.
Yeah, I don't know if they've used it for like a, uh, overnight place or what, but it's not, not in great shape.
It, it's, is there someplace on, have you moved it around that it could be located on the property in a spot that would meet code?
Um, I have not tried to move it around the property to see, um, if it would.
Yeah, 'cause I, you know.
I mean, it doesn't appear that it, I mean, it's possible, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Now, simply because they pulled a building for that to add on to the house, that will not require the shed coming to come onto it?
No, no. Safety means?
Well, if, the shed is not compliant right now, it's already, setbacks is already back.
Yeah.
As it sits today, but it's grandfathered, and obviously, if they're able to pull a permit to add on to the house, will that cause the shed then to be,
hmm.
you know, required to be brought onto it? I just didn't know if they were, these were two separate deals.
So Gina, your staff recommendation is approval, with the caveat that to our firewall be constructed and the shed be relocated. So if they did both of those, would the variance be necessary?
Uh, yes, because they, they're not meeting the LDR requirement of ten feet separation between buildings.
Even if the shed is relocated?
Well, if the shed is relocated, yeah, you're right.
Well, are, were that.
Can they connect, can they connect the shed to the building?
Sure. I mean, they could, if they wanted to.
Is it just a roof, or does that have walls?
Well.
They have a breechway between the two, do you have to have a po- uh, fire separation?
No. You still have to have fire separation, you don't have to have, then your LDR separation, 'cause then they're one, they're one building.
Okay, the recommendation, he said they need to do both, but I thought here, at the, the code here, it said the, if there's not a ten foot separation, they put a two hour firewall, it'll, uh, uh, the ten foot.
Yeah, they don't, i- if they did both, they would, if they moved the sheds, then they wouldn't need the variance.
Okay.
So, really, that.
But what if they, what if they put a firewall in there?
If they put the firewall.
That's all they need.
They still need a variance from you guys, because it's still a LDR requirement. So they will meet the building code, but they would not meet LDR.
But that would be under a separate application, right?
No, no, that's what this is for, this, this application is for variance, for the ten foot separation. I really shouldn't have brought the shed into it, it was kind of an idea of maybe how they could get ar- get awa- get around it, but the, what they're asking for is a variance to that ten foot separation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have none?
Where, where is it in the land, Bill, do, do you know?
Um, I can find it later real quick, I don't know exactly, I'll tell them about it.
Is that move they wanna add on, is that pretty large, is it?
It could be.
I can't see.
It could be. If you provide a look, you're like, I don't know why would they put anything there, yeah, it almost looks like it's, this.
Like a porch.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it'd be.
Yeah, it's like thirty fourteen, it's about, it's about thirty six.
It's section two point zero two point zero seven C.
Two point zero two.
Point zero seven. C.
What's more, two point zero two?
Point zero seven.
Zero seven.
C.
C.
Gina, I can't really hear you add on, what, what's the difference between add on?
Twelve, twelve feet by thirty six feet.
So he could cut that down, he said twelve feet.
That's true.
Less of that, then he would have his distance, wouldn't he?
Mm-hmm, uh-huh.
Yeah, if he took it to ten feet.
Yeah. Not by the meters.
Mm-hmm.
That, that'd be cheaper, probably, too.
Yeah.
It definitely would be cheaper.
Yeah.
That'll rebuild the old shed.
That's metal, gee, really, it looked like it was metal, from what I saw.
I think it was wood.
Was it wood?
Yeah.
But it did look very close to nails, so like, are they gonna put something more on it?
Oh my, that even looked like, it was really close to, you'd need setback.
Yeah.
With the feet, it's like.
By the way, great magnifying glass, take your phone, put it on camera, and zoom in, and it's actually a magnifying glass.
Yeah. That's a good trick.
And at, and at the same time, if we're doing it in a restaurant, the light comes on, because it can't see you, there's a.
And you. I'm gonna tell a tricks to keep this living on.
Is there any more discussion on this? Gina, I, I fully understand, because it sounds like staff is approving it if you do two other things, so I just want to get clear on that.
Well. I, I guess there's a lot of different ways to skin the chat, and I guess I, I, I didn't really present that fully, but, um.
I think what Gina was trying to do is let him build what he was hoping to build, but then make it safe by adding the two hour setback.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's what I was trying to say, but I didn't do a good job of saying it at all.
I understand. You're running that way, you know, on paper.
I, I think I would feel better about making the recommendation that they cut it back two feet.
And just, you know.
Instead of going through these gyrations and, and as I said, I'm, I'm just feeling that would be much less expensive than building a two hour firewall.
Yeah, that's, it would be extremely expensive.
Yeah.
And that almost looks like a four, so I can't really.
Yeah. Kind of half feet.
And then we don't have to do this stuff, because the shed may be a mess, but it's there and it's existing, and it's been there for a while, so.
Yeah.
If we, we just, I guess, deny the variance and suggest that they come back.
Like, have a recommendation?
Yeah.
Would you like?
And then.
And, and it's not even a full two feet, because according to this, the variance was eight, uh, eight foot seven, so all we really need is, uh, one foot five, yeah.
Yeah. One foot three, yeah.
Okay, so I move that we deny the variance request, but suggest that by construting the add-on one point five feet less in width, that they can meet code, and then we don't have to mess with the shed.
Okay, motion?
Sure. Motion in a second.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, next item. Another setback variance. I think it was one oh six South Thirty Second Street.
Yeah, this really isn't a mess.
Yeah, it is.
This is a sad situation.
Yeah, here, here's a, a quick background on this, the owners have submitted a variance application to request permission to encroach on the right side and front setbacks for single-family residents. It's already been constructed, single-family home was constructed in the wrong place on the property, therefore, the covered front porch home encroaches on the front setback by one point six seven feet, and the stairs encroach on the right side by one six three feet. This is simply the case of a mistake made by the contractor and the placement in the home. The as-built survey is attached, the stairs appear to be one foot wider than required, so they can usefully be reconstructed to meet the right side setback. We have run into this on two other occasions that I've been involved in, and the contractors addressed it without issue in order to alleviate the front setback encroachment. The home would have to be moved towards the rear of the property, or modifications would have to be made, the front porch, living room, foundation to bring them. Front of the home within the required front setbacks. And we have received. Something from a. Note two, actually, this one, this is one oh six South Thirty Second Street, and there is one email received on.
Yes.
Before I get, I get into the email, is there any, any public comment? Gina?
Yes.
Okay, do these people own the house when it was built?
They, the, the people owned the, the property when the house was built.
So it was built for them?
Yes.
Does anybody have any idea what it means to say, I've been, I've been involved in two other occasions, the contractors addressed it without issue? What the hell does that mean?
That's me, I was, I was saying that I've been involved in, in two situations where contractors built stairs in the setbacks, and they addressed it without, without coming before this board for variance. They, we said, hey, you put your stairs in the wrong spot, and they fixed that, and it was addressed without issue, that's what I was trying to say.
Okay, uh.
Yeah, you get that.
My, my feelings on this is that, uh, the owners and the contractors moved the codes when they built it. It was, it was their responsibility to come into the code, and if they didn't, then it needs to be fixed so they comply, and their redress is to sue the contractors.
Gina, what happens?
If, if this is a public comment, do I need to read this for, as part of the public, before we get into board discussion? Again, just one second.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, um, this comes in from Bill Champion, my name is Bill Champion, and I have the house adjacent to David Hand's house on one oh six South Thirty Second, please allow David the variance request. Davis and I have gone through many challenges over the past few years at all of Mexico Beach ads, his builder has been negligent on many issues and left Davis to finish his home. I support allowing him the variance, so the Hand family can start enjoying their home there, please contact me if you have any questions, thank you for your time, Bill Champion.
Gina, I, I drove by today, and this is a really sad deal, because this house is built, and I didn't choose it. They're gonna have to tear the whole front of the house up.
Yeah, it's, it's a major deal to fix the, the front setback, the side setback issue is, like I said, not a big deal.
Yeah, the, the stairs is not big issue, but the front of this house, you're gonna have to tear the whole place down, maybe not the.
Well, you, you, you need the porch.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
You gotta have that porch.
This is a giant deal, what happens if the city denies and says, it's gotta be fixed? Is it built, I mean, does the owner of that place bear only recourse is to go back to the contractor and sue the contractor, and fix it?
Correct, yeah.
And that will satisfy the requirement for the violation until such a time as it is fixed. Soon as he files suit, that satisfies the requirement.
I'm just kinda bewildered, though, something, the magnitude of this, there's not somebody here representing the builder or the owner. You know, I mean, this is a major thing.
I agree, I agree.
You know, 'cause he, he's, he's pointed out two things, first, he said the survey markers were wrong or not identifiable. He's blaming it on, somebody's blaming it on the survey markers, and so who, who is it called, is the guy that did the survey? You know, or is it the guy that didn't pay attention to the survey, the builder? So, I mean.
It, it either pays, it doesn't matter, but, you know, the thing is, this builder, whoever he is, if he gets away with this, this time, then what happens next time? And if we're not gonna, you know, I, I can't imagine that the owners don't want to sue the bejeebies out of him, I mean, I would.
Yeah, but what, what happens, I mean, we've seen this time and time again, where a builder just hits the trail, and there's nothing left, nobody to sue.
If the builder does business in Florida, he can be sued in Florida, and if he's out of state, he has to come back here to face the suit.
Gina, who was the builder?
Robin Custom Homes.
Is this a pretty good sized builder, I mean?
Uh.
What?
They've built, they've built a few, a few.
The new one? It looks like it's a modular.
They're all modulars, yeah.
They're modular, it's a modular, so, oh, yeah, it's beautiful purple, have you seen the?
Oh. Yeah.
It's a very nice purple house.
I know, uh-huh.
Yeah.
Pilotings are on.
Yeah, it's very nice.
So then, this is a modular home, right?
Correct.
Could it, could it simply, well, not simply, but could it be reset back?
Yeah, I mean, they can definitely move it.
Yes.
But, and, and it was, it, it consists of at least four modules, right?
With a lot of.
I looked at it, it's, it's two stories and two modules wide.
I think it's one, it's one.
It's one, it is right there.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think it's two, two modules.
Okay, yeah, okay, it's not as wide as I thought it was, thank you for the photo.
But then you have to think of these as all, this is on titleings, yeah, so that's gonna be a, a really big issue, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
The, the problem I'm having with it, just simply, is the fact that how can we let this builder, whoever he is or she, get away with this and, you know, hold our head up the next time around?
But doesn't it also impede the view that the other property owners would enjoy by coming out further, that anybody here wants someone on their street to do the same thing?
Exactly, I would.
Well, I'm not sure that what it, what it's letters is saying, he's part of the neighborhood, it said that.
Well, and that neighborhood may not mind, but what about the neighborhood on the other side?
Right. You have a closed public comment sheet, and I have one other comment, but if you look at the standards of review, the only standard of review that is met by this variance is that it's a minimum necessary to provide reasonable beneficial use of the property, everything else is negative.
Let me ask one more question, uh, to Gina. When they started construction, it put the piles on, we have an inspector comes over and look at it, does he not check to see that it's in?
Only if they call in. We don't go out unless they call us, so.
Okay.
So I'm guessing that they don't have a specific type of occupancy on this one?
No, no. Yeah, I mean, it, and it, it does happen, um, there, there was a, another guy on, uh, two oh thirty fifth street that had a candidly report that he realized during the building process, that his candidly report was actually extending over the, over the setback, and that his, and he actually had to move a set of piles, but he realized that during the middle, and he took care of it, and, and, and he worked it out, so. It, it, it happens every now and then, um, but.
I remember that, Gina, he applied for a variance, and we denied it, that's why he applied.
And this goes back to the problem I have with this, is that once we allow this to happen, then that opens the door, and it's not fair to anybody else who has been in a similar situation and done the right thing, like we're talking about, or, you know, allows this contractor to do business in a way that is, in my opinion, very inappropriate. So, you know, I really have a problem approving it, I have great sympathy for the people who are going through this. But at the same time, once we start saying, oh, well, this time we'll let it go, then why would anybody ever call and ask the building department to check on things during construction? If we could just build what we wanna build, and then we're gonna approve it. I mean, I, I just have a real problem with that.
Understood. Gina, how did this come up, that, uh, they needed variance?
Um, when I went out to do the final inspection. I said.
Code enforcement officers were walking up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
Okay, I'll, I'll go for it. I believe that we deny this request.
One second, can I, a second, this roll or not? No, okay.
Okay, we have a motion, is it a second?
And the motion is to deny one oh six South Thirty Second, I'll second.
Okay, vote please.
Mr. Carrigan? Ms. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, next item. Fence height variance at one oh five South Thirty Eighth Street, number twelve. The owners have submitted a variance application to request permission to construct an eight foot tall fence. Property is zone high density residential and currently contains an attached residence and the eight foot fence. Fence was constructed to a height of eight feet to provide more access, more privacy. Application along with a photograph of the fence. The application, along with the photograph of the fence, is attached. Maximum height for fences allowed by the LDC is six feet. Okay, any public comment?
I have a question for Gina. Did they, uh, get a permit for the fence?
No.
So they're violators already? Uh, and if, I mean, the townhouse hasn't gone up yet, nor have there been any plans submitted?
This is an existing, I don't know.
I mean, I'm talking about what they're saying next, if the townhouse goes up, is what they're saying.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, even if the townhouse goes up on pylons, I don't believe that an eight-foot fence is gonna provide significantly more privacy than a six-foot fence. So my position is it can be sand.
There was one email that, that I have from the public. Is that correct, Lindsay?
Yes.
So this, this reads from Cheryl Myrick. "I am a near neighbor. I find the height and box light appearance, box light appearance of the fence confining and unattractive, but could accept it for the owner's sake. However, it blocks the breeze and obstructs the view. So I would not like to see a president set it, as I would not wish to be boxed in by such fences if other neighbors decided to do the same. Thank you." Okay, any comment from the board?
I drove by today and I, the whole thing, I don't quite get, you know, why we're even, a lot of fences in that situation. I mean, if I own one of those units and that one unit put up an eight-foot or a six-foot fence, that knocks off your sea breeze, it, it doesn't, it's not very attractive looking, is it? The whole back of those twelve units there, I mean, it's, to me, it, it's not attractive at all.
Right.
But, uh, in this situation, I don't, I don't even know what I'd do.
I looked at it too, and the rationale they have is that a townhouse is being built on pylons. Is that the one that's about two lots away and the pylons are up now?
No, there's no pylons around here.
I don't, I don't know what, what they're referencing in that.
Yeah, it's a nuclear lot.
It's one of that fatal lot.
Well, there's a nuclear lot right next to them, but then there are pylons going up a little ways away, which, to your point earlier, I don't think it creates much of a privacy difference anyway if the people's fence were six feet.
Yeah, this one, this one came, did, this one did come from a parent unfortunate. Um, I don't know if she saw it and caught it or if someone called or what, but, uh, Kathy did bring this to us.
If, if the fence was six foot, would it lead into one or is it almost right now?
If the fence was six feet and they got a permit, um, then it, it probably would be a compliance.
But they do not have a permit.
They do not get a permit and it's eight feet.
I, I could not, I mean, I, I could not approve a young man's thing that you have to make.
It could not. We do have specs that we have to meet for fences, um, and then we have, you know, check the site line to make sure it's in the right location, um.
And, and I'll tell you this too. If you guys approve this, I'll be here next month with a request for it. Uh, you, you know, it's, if we're gonna have the rules.
I think it may be taller than eight feet and doesn't stock it and.
Four seven.
Yes?
Oh, yeah. I don't know whether that, and they can't keep anything, we quit looking at it here. Oh, and they didn't get a permit. It's not a compliance. I.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright.
But I've made a bunch of motions, so somebody else is gonna have to take the lead on this one.
Anybody else in motion?
I'll make a motion that we deny the variance to have an eight-foot fence.
Alright, we have a motion for denial.
I second.
Vote please.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Master?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Okay. The last thing on the agenda, comp plan vision. Mr. Bush?
Here we go again. Okay, one of the deficiencies of the comp plan that was developed in two thousand and nine was it didn't give a clear vision of what Mexico Beach should do. So that was the first thing we addressed when we had the public meeting, say, what kind of town does we want to have? Hey, if you look at paragraph two there on your handout, which is vision, that is what we came up with after that meeting. That is what was briefed to the city council on the way we planned to progress in developing the comp plan, uh, immediately after that meeting. Uh, council said, "That looks good to me. Go ahead and do it." That was written into the draft comp plan. Sometime between the end of Michael and the time that that, that the comp plan was presented to the city council for submission to the state, that disappeared. Nobody keeps, nobody even remembers it, but I remember it because I wrote it. So what I would like the council to recommend to the city council is that we put in a change to the comp plan to have the first, that one single page of the comp plan appear as you've gotten that handout, and all that change is, it puts that vision in to what already exists in the comp plan. So you're simply adding that paragraph to the comp plan. If you don't do that, okay, our comp plan still does not provide clear vision of what the city should do. Questions? What, what would this add to the comp plan that we don't know where to, already get out of it? It gives a clear vision of what the city should look like. In what way? It describes what we want the city to be.
So, yeah, I understand all that, uh, Gina, but gosh, you know, in the last six months or so, we've already got one, two, three, three major construction subdivisions, land housing, hit number B, says prevent congestion and overcrowding. Now, I guess we're talking congestion in the land congestion or the highway congestion, but that's a separate issue. But I, I do believe it needs to be included into the plan.
Now, I mean, that, that, the comp plan sets the vision for what this ci- city should look like ten years in the future. So that's what the land development code is based on.
Okay, let me clarify this. You have said that the thing that's missing is just item two, the vision.
That's correct. The way that it went.
Is, is, wait a minute, is, is item three, the city intent is to?
That is currently in the comp plan.
Okay, okay.
What happened when it went before the board was that paragraph that's entitled "vision" disappears and purpose went in its place. Okay, so the only thing missing then is two. Two.
Which is one.
Three now, say. Excuse me? Three and. Number one and number three are already in the comp plan.
Okay. Is there any reason that there would be opposition to this?
We've got this oversight.
There was an oversight, I would say, probably by Alara, because she's the one that did the final draft.
Yeah. Right, okay.
And again, I would say is that members of the committee were not allowed to review the final draft before it went to the city council. So what, what are the, what are the steps necessary to get this paragraph inserted? You have to present it to the city council. They have to have two readings and then they vote on it, and then all we have to do is send it to the state. The comp plan can be amended any number of times it wants to be within given year. It used to be just two times a year. Now the city can amend it anytime they want. But I can't quite figure out what we're getting and what we're losing here either way. I mean, you've got a paragraph here that says we want a small town. Well, we got that. Are we concerned that? I'm, I'm not quite. Because if you don't say you want a small town, we can build it, grow it into a big town. But I'm not quite sure if we add this, what we get or what we lose either way. I mean, what, what's the point of going through the, jumping through hoops here to put this in there? What are we gonna get? Because that provides a clear vision of what the city should be, which was a fault of the old comp plan. So it, that, you don't think vision is implied already? Well, you can apply it if you care to. Why imply something when you can put it in writing? Cause there's no question about it.
Well, I don't see any harm in doing it. It's more of an, it'd be the straight of.
It sounds like the language that's in this is consistent with the vision and the personality and the identity that has been agreed upon universally. I, I don't know if anything within it is acceptable, but I agree with having a clear vision.
I'm not opposed to it. I just, I mean, it seems to do with the comp plan. If you go through it all, then this is kind of implied, you know? But again, it is not, it's not implying, it is saying. Okay, I'm not opposed to it.
What, do we, the purpose statement say?
Excuse me?
What does the current purpose statement say? It says what this is.
The current.
Oh, I got, I think purpose up there, I forgot.
There's no change. He just added two in there.
Basically, when it went to them, they had purpose and then.
When it went to them, they add, they remove the vision and put the purpose in. And I would say that our advisor did that. I can't say for sure, but that purpose did not exist before it went to the council.
Okay, so I guess my question is, is there any downside to us throwing this out there for the council to take action on if they, you know, like, is there a downside to that? I mean.
I don't see any downside. It's more of a stated, but it does give, uh, Jack, Mr. Bush said, a clear vision.
Yeah, so.
More, I mean, we, I mean, is this something they're planning and zoning board should vote on? I mean.
You, you guys give recommendations to the council. The council can approve or deny, so I mean, this, this is, this is what you guys.
But in this situation, it can be taken straight to the council, right? Without bypassing this body. We don't have to.
No, no, the, the plan zoning board is possible.
Okay.
But this is not gonna trigger, you know, having to redo the whole thing or any of that kind of, well, in that case, I don't see anything negative in going ahead and, and approving this and making the recommendation to the council. It seems like.
Okay. Can I make a motion?
Go for it.
Yeah. Uh, make a motion to approve, uh, your vision being inserted in the comp plan system?
I have a motion. Is there a second? Then we have a vote.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Master?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else? There being no more business, this meeting is adjourned.
You have one for Ryan?
Sorry. I don't, I'm having, I've got a couple of questions.
Are we done?
She has another reading.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, that's two. That's going before the.
Okay, this is not for us.
Went on.
It's just sort of, oh, it turns out for the client and I was wanting more.
I remember.
Full goal for this, for the company a year ago. We said, any further conversation needs to be determined to his lawyer.
I hated voting.
Okay, how about who, uh, and who, uh, who's the, uh, permit requirement?
And then something like this comes along where these people's got a home.
Because that's why you're lying with him, right on.
And I am so sorry for this.
Between that and the, and we've got two fences that it can pull up without getting.
I still don't like the fact that I made.
So that's, that's considered a violation of the code? So we should put the enforcement.
Yeah, enforcement.